Good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2023 Tuolton City Council Work Session. Our first of on the agenda tonight is the Washington County Supportive Housing Services Update from the Program Manager from Washington County, Kathryn. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for having me.
Sure, come on up.
All right. Okay, I think I've got all the things. Hi, nice to see you all. I'm Kathryn Gallion, Program Manager with Washington County Department of Housing Services. I oversee our program implementation work within the Homeless Services Division. I'm happy to be here with you all tonight to talk about how last year went for the Supportive Housing Services Implementation. Let's see. Okay, can you go back one? Uh-oh. Okay, well, so some highlights that are missing. There should be one more slide in there. We had almost 1,400 housing placements for previously homeless households last year. So 866 total households that had been homeless were housed. We 1,137 evictions prevented. So that was representing a little over 400 households that were facing eviction and prevented from that eviction going forward. Created 84 new permanent supportive housing. There it is. That's the one. Thank you. Eighty-four permanent supportive housing placements, so units within apartment buildings that have onsite wraparound services, and then 220 additional shelter beds or units created within the system. That's some pretty amazing growth, and we're happy to talk more about what that all means for people tonight. In total, 2,500, more than 2,500 people served. And each one of these numbers, oops, can you, slide three? The one with Russell on it. There it is. Okay. Oh, we're just out of order. Thank you. Each one of those numbers represents a person like Russell who had been unsheltered on the streets in Washington County for, I think, around eight years. He was in an encampment. He worked with outreach workers who were going out to his encampment and, over the course of time, built trust and relationships with him, got him to a place where he was, he had enough hope that he was willing to take, ready to take that next step and come into a shelter program. As soon as he was ready, Russell's outreach worker got him a bed right away and got him signed up for a housing program. And now he is engaged in the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter Program, and he's working with a housing case manager to find an apartment with his new long-term rent assistance voucher. So for our goals, you can go to the next slide. There we go. So for 2022, 2023, we set some ambitious but achievable goals. We were looking to house 500 new households in our housing case management program, so our long-term rent assistance with support services, and we actually housed 636 households, so exceeded that goal. For rapid rehousing, our aim was to rehouse 400 households. We housed 230. So in year one, we learned, similar to the housing case management program, it takes a good year to ramp up and get to the place where you have all the staffing in place and all the partner organizations to actually do the work. So we aim to be closer to that goal with the rapid rehousing program this year, and then exceeded our eviction prevention goal with 414 households. Overall, we exceeded our targets for serving both Population A and Population B. And for those of you who may not know what Population A and Population B mean, Population A is those who are experiencing or at risk of experiencing chronic homelessness, and Population B is folks who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness, but not necessarily chronic. So don't have a disabling condition or additional barriers to long-term stability. Next slide, please. So what this has taken over the last two years of Supportive Housing Services Implementation is just a real significant scaling up of the overall system of care. And you can see it really starkly here in this slide, going from having 12 total case managers or outreach workers in the continuum to having 144 is significant, and it means a lot for the people that, all of this work requires people to do it, right? It's human connections, it's relationship building, it's trust building. And now having that capacity within the system to do that has made a huge difference. Our shelter capacity going from 49 units of shelter to 426, also incredible. Prior to 2021, there were no full-time year-round beds for single adults anywhere in Washington County. And to now be at 426 is pretty remarkable. And our overall housing capacity going from 775 permanent housing placement opportunities to over 2,500 has made a significant difference in the experience of people who are going through our coordinated entry system and are working with our shelter and outreach workers. There's, there is hope. There are places for people to go now in a way that there hasn't been before. Next slide, please. So to focus in on some of our program areas, we scaled up our year-round shelter beds to more than 400, and that includes the family promise of Tuolton Valley, purchasing their Tigard Hotel that can serve up to 70 families. I think they're at 65 right now. And then our winter shelters have all been converted to full-time year-round. Next up, we have the Beaverton Shelter Construction. They had their wall breaking in early, in October, I think it was. We opened a new pod, 40-bed pod shelter in Hillsborough on Friday was the grand opening, and today they started enrolling people for shelter. We'll open one more shelter in Aloha. And then, I think this Friday, is the groundbreaking for the Just Compassion expansion, which will be coming online soon as well. Next slide. So permanent supportive housing is the, is the primary model for serving folks who have experienced chronic homelessness. So folks who are transitioning out of homelessness that have disabling conditions. And we have 84 permanent supportive housing homes with onsite wraparound services that opened in the last year, including Hartwood Commons. And then, that was the first large-scale, fully PSH building in Washington County. And then we'll bring on 28 more PSH homes at the Opal, which is just off Salzman Road. And what we're hearing is that having these opportunities in particular for our chronically homeless individuals that oftentimes have a hard time either obtaining or maintaining housing in just regular market-rate apartments, that this provides a level of hope and opportunity that, again, just was not a part of our reality prior to the SHS program. Next slide. So we also continue to work at systems alignment. We know that we can't do this alone. The homeless services system is not the only system that interacts with these individuals. So we've been focusing on ensuring alignment with other systems, including our medical case conferencing. So working with healthcare providers to ensure that that, those connections between people and their primary care provider and ensuring that their medical needs are being met is key to their long-term stability. We have housing liaisons situated within the health system, within the corrections system, and within the shelter system now to ensure that those linkages from folks coming into shelter to exiting to a permanent housing destination can continue to happen. We're also partnering with landlords to create additional capacity, PSH buildings, in new construction and existing construction where it would be mixed-use units. So the building may not be entirely PSH, but some PSH and some non. And then we also have risk mitigation funds and incentives to encourage landlords to work with our programs and our participants. We, the SHS program, as you know, is a regional model. So in some areas, we're focusing on regional coordination, and in others, we take the opportunities to focus locally. Next slide. Okay, we are also focusing on ensuring equity within the system, and we do that through investing in equity in the workforce. So ensuring that the diversity of the staff within the organizations that are partners, that are providing the services, that that staff is reflective of the community that we're serving. Fifty percent of the, right now, actually, the staff in those organizations is more diverse than the general population. Fifty percent have lived experience. The average salary is a sustainable living wage, and what we found is that culturally-specific organizations actually pay more than the non-culturally-specific organizations. We've expanded our culturally-specific services by increasing partnerships with new organizations, including Virginia Garcia, NARA, the Native American Rehabilitation Association, and Greater Good Northwest. We're pretty proud to have expanded those partnerships and brought new providers into the homeless services system that hadn't been engaging before. Next slide, please. So we are, we conduct an annual equity analysis, and we are on track with most communities. We're doing very well, reaching Latinx community. We are still working on improving our services to the Asian-American, Asian-American families. We do find that we are serving Asian-American families to a greater proportion in our prevention programs, but less so in our rehousing and shelter programs.
I have a question. Excuse me. What do you mean by Latinx?
The Latin dispora, so people of Hispanic or Latin.
So that'd be Latino, Latina, if I'm correct? Okay. I just, I'm familiar with the term Latinx. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Next slide, please. So for the financial overview, the program started in 2021, and in that first fiscal year, a little over $10 million was expended in that system development. As you can see, we expanded that in 22, 23, and then the 23, 24 budget, we're at up to just under 80 or 90 million. That includes new programs and scaling the scope of services. We had hoped to spend in 22, 23 about 75% of the budget, and we actually expended 98%, which is just a demonstration of the growth of the county and the community of providers. We're also making one-time investments to support, to support shelter acquisition and land acquisition, and then working on effective and efficient deployment to scale up and invest carryover strategically, right? We want to make sure we're not building anything that we can't sustain. Next slide. So as we, as you can see in the, most of what we've presented so far, this has been a significant growth within the system. And so kind of the mantra for year three is really sustain, improve, quality improvement, making sure that we're, making sure that our programs are stable, that our providers are stable, we're increasing capacity within those organizations to be strong and healthy, and increasing our evaluation and monitoring processes. And next slide. So the, why we do this really is, we have an example of a story, Danica, who is the heart and soul, really, of Hartwood Commons. She came working from the shelter system. So she worked in youth shelters and adult shelters, helping people who didn't have access to housing, access housing. And now she's in a permanent supportive housing building. And her kind of career trajectory and experience really encapsulates what we're, what we're trying to do here, which is building a system that provides pathways and opportunities for folks to go from unsheltered homelessness to be in shelter as they need, to find permanent housing, and to really grow and develop in a community, to reintegrate into the world with the rest of us, and eventually graduate from our programs and be completely self-sustaining. So as the resident services coordinator at Hartwood, Danica is focusing on building community, creating fun and opportunities for people to kind of reconnect with some of the basic humanity that can be stripped from people when they're living outside for extended periods of time. And that, things like haircuts, bingo games, learning how to cook, and making family meals in the community rooms. And in her own words, reflecting on her work at Hartwood Commons, she said, "It's not just that you're not homeless anymore. It's not just that you're not going to shelter anymore, but that you're coming home, and you're coming home to Hartwood Commons. And you know that there are people there that care about you, and there's things for you to engage in." And that's a big, big part of the impetus behind the work here. And I'll just share on a personal note, as someone who has been working in Washington County in this continuum for more than 20 years, just the amazing growth that we've seen in the programs has had a real impact on the lives of people that have been living outside on our streets for as long as I can remember. So thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm happy to take any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Kathryn. Questions for Kathryn. Council Sacco.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. I have two questions. This might seem like a silly question. It's okay if you have the numbers handy, but are we, these numbers are amazing. Are we seeing a reduction in homelessness, or are there a lot of, are there a lot of new homeless populations? So kind of just wondering if we're making a dent?
Yeah.
Or is that issue just perpetuating with, with people who are new to houselessness? That's my first question. Second question, who are the people are we serving? Are you serving? Are they people just of Washington County? Are we, are we also assisting people of Multnomah County or Clovis County as well?
Great questions. So first, our early indications are yes, we are making a dent. So we have an annual point-in-time count. This year's point-in-time, our point-in-time count for unsheltered individuals has been decreasing. So I don't have the numbers exactly off the top of my head, but this year, we did see the decrease in unsheltered homelessness, again, despite actually having an increase, a more robust data process and including some administrative data. And actually, I believe the final point-in-time count report from Portland State University from HTRAC is coming out this week. It might be coming out Friday, so stay tuned. And there's a whole report about it. So we are seeing that we're making a dent, especially in unsheltered homelessness. We are also serving more people. However, because of the way SHS defines homelessness compared to the way HUD defines homelessness, we are, we are able to serve more people that are in unstable or, and housing instability doubled-up situations that previously wouldn't have been able to access these resources. So essentially, what that means is we are slowing the inflow of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness while also increasing the exits. That was your first question. And the second question was, who are we serving? And we see most of the folks that we're serving are coming from Washington County. The homeless population moves around a lot, and so it's pretty normal to be seeing people that have, that are interacting with all three systems. But generally, most of the folks that we're serving here, we're serving because they are here and have a connection somehow to Washington County.
Council Hillier.
Thank you so much. What's the average age of a person that's in your program, and then the length of time maybe that they're in before they graduate, please?
Great question. I'll have to look up the average age. Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head. But, and interestingly, length of time, we're still a little early to tell. You know, we're two years in. Our rapid rehousing programs have a limit of two years, HCMS, the, and permanent supportive housing are permanent, longer-term programs. So we're still, jury's still out on that one, on how long people will be engaged.
It's great work. So thank you so much.
Sure.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
Do you have any data for us about, it's nice to see you, by the way. I was wondering where you went, so I'm glad that you're there. Is there any data around how many people from Tuolton are served?
Good question. It's a little bit challenging to tease that out across all of the program areas. We do have, we do look at, you know, kind of geographic distribution in the point-in-time count, and we do have some questions about where do you spend most of your time in our Phase One assessment. I don't have that, like, prepared to give you, but I'll take that back and see if we can get that information.
That'd be great. And then, yeah, I also, I'm thinking back to the numbers that we saw. The, I'm glad to hear about the prevention, and I'm glad that it's working. I know that it's a way to save money. And, and I'm curious as well if there's any advocacy around for people that are at risk of being homeless for, like, court situations?
Yeah, great question. So eviction prevention, there's a degree of separation between homelessness prevention and eviction prevention. So there is a much larger system of eviction prevention that isn't necessarily specifically homelessness prevention. SHS funds are used to support some of the eviction prevention work that's happening. There's also, OHCS has an investment called Redap that funds a significant portion of the eviction prevention. Most of that work is done through community action. And as part of, there is also some eviction prevention work at Centro Cultural, and then other programs that are, like, smaller, that are accessed through coordinated entry, including one that's run by Family Promise of Tuolton Valley. And there is staff in eviction court from community action, and I believe Centro as well, to assist people who are facing eviction that are also at risk of homelessness to apply for eviction prevention assistance, that, right there in the court, which is pretty amazing.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I attended something that was very strong in that, and that really helps with prevention numbers as a good best practice. And then I just also want to say that the fact that Washington County didn't have supportive housing, I used to live in the Detroit metro area, so it's really, especially as a social worker, has been kind of shocking to me living here. And so I appreciate all the effort standing this up and hope that people that have catastrophic health issues, a lot of people can find themselves homeless that never thought they could be, and the fact that there's help for them and that they're getting services is a great thing. Thank you.
Council President Pratt.
Thank you for all the great work Washington County's done with this program. I have a question, and it's, I had read something about a spot in Portland where there were a lot of shared spaces, and it wasn't monitored, and it became a dangerous place to live. So I'm wondering, you showed that wonderful story about Danica, and I'm wondering if you have, like, on these permanent housing locations where there are common spaces, if you have someone around to make sure it's a safe place for people to live, or how you monitor that?
Yeah, so that's the big, the big difference between permanent supportive housing and people who are placed in scattered site housing is that the services are available onsite. So there's security, there's, but more importantly, there are staff there to engage with people to prevent things from becoming unsafe in the first place.
Yeah, okay. And then the second one, I just have to advocate for Tuolton because, I mean, I recently heard of a family with children, and they, they're now living in their car, and we have no place to put these people in our town so that kids can stay in the school. And, you know, that's essential for continuity for those children. So I'm just advocating for our little part of town here.
Thank you. And just, we'll note that kids can stay in their school. So if they do access a shelter program in Tigard, they would be able to return to, to stay in their school of origin under the McKinney-Vento Act.
Council Reyes.
Thank you for your presentation, and I too advocate for the families here in Tuolton. So I think in the future, when we're, when you're presenting to us, I really would like to see numbers about how many families have been served in this community. So I think it's important because that's what we're, that's our constituents. Those are our constituents. We want to know how many people here are taking advantage of these services and how they access the services, because we're on the far east side of, many, many things are happening in the county. The county's like way over there in Hillsborough. So I do want to see some numbers next time. My question is for prevention. Do you work with other nonprofits? For instance, I just heard that the, some of the upcoming, or like homeless, not homeless, but people that are at the risk of becoming homeless are women 55 and 80 years old because of so many life changes happening around that time. And I heard that there's, I just wonder if there are any programs out there. There is a program that is called Oregon Share, Home Share Oregon, which, you know, you share homes. Are you familiar with that program, and do you, do you promote it within those families, those individuals that are not chronically homeless, but they're on the verge of losing their home, or they're, they're actually really serious about sharing a home with someone else?
Yeah, thank you. So I'll start with, we, the Washington County Department of Housing Services works entirely with community partners. So all of the actual work of engaging with people and providing services is done by our community partners. SHS does not specifically fund any programs like that, although our coordinated entry system is aware of those programs and refers people to them. When they, when they try to access the homeless services program, they would be kind of redirected back to something that is more specific to home sharing or retaining an asset like their home. Yeah.
Yeah, and the other is, are you seeing that demographic of women between 55 and 80 kind of coming to your, towards your doors and needing help?
Yes. We are definitely seeing an increase in the aging population, especially among our unsheltered homeless population. It's definitely a thing that we are attending to right now. The, we offer emergency shelter that is not in congregate setting, so non-congregate shelter to provide additional supports for folks for, you know, whom are caught and may not be the best sleeping arrangement for them, and prioritize both rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and other permanent housing specifically for that over 55 population.
Other questions? I just got two, Kathryn.
Okay.
On the slide about evaluation, you know, you're in year three. Can you tell a bit more about evaluation? Because I remember last year when we got this presentation, I had the same question of how you're evaluating, you know, your partner agencies, how often, the metrics, and your ability to replace a not-performing agency? If we could talk a little bit, you know, where you're at now in year three with that process?
Sure, yeah. So at the end of year two, we provided agency assessments to each organization, comparing kind of where they were to their contracted goals. So the deliverables within their agreement, and provided opportunities for plans. We provided capacity-building grants to organizations where they had, they needed to increase their capacity to deliver. And we have established a process now for identifying and ending contracts with underperforming organizations. This year, we will be focusing on This year, we will be focusing on doing onsite monitoring visits with each of the organizations. We do have a process, kind of a legacy process, through the continuum of care, that allows us to do both system-wide analysis. So we look at, are the programs across the system delivering the outcomes that we're looking for? If they're not, where do we need to shift resources to better achieve those outcomes? And we're applying that to the SHS programs as well.
So is each contracted agency checked on once a year, a couple times a year? How, what's the evaluation process? Because I, I know some people doing great work, I heard some people were stuck, were struggling, and you helped them out. I just want to know, because it's, we're talking a lot of money, you want to make sure the impact is there, and that it's being monitored by county staff.
Yeah, I, the monitoring process will be annual, so onsite monitoring for each organization annually. And then, once we get to the other side of that, high-performing organizations may go to a reduced schedule.
You should mention possible inspections of onsite inspections, too, in addition to the annual monitoring?
No, that is the annual.
Oh, that's part of the annual? Okay, thank you.
On-site, onsite visits.
Okay, great. And then on the, I'm of course going to focus in on the money. So on the, this New Year's budget, you're semi-almost doubling your amount of money that you're going to dispense. So you had roughly 2,500 people served this past year. Are you envisioning doubling that? Because you're roughly doubling the money. What's the impact addition of dollars have on amount of people served you're envisioning in the 23, 24 budget?
Great question. So the, some of the investments are one-time investments, capital investments, building new shelters. So we expect to have the additional shelter beds, which increases the number of individuals. And then we also retain, so the ongoing rent assistance for households that are served now with housing navigation or outreach, once they are housed, then that's rent assistance costs that go to them. So it's increased cost per individual, and then new households coming in as well. So I wouldn't be able to give you an, like, an overall number of how many we expect to serve with, with the new investments off the top of my head, but we wouldn't expect to see more.
So you're expecting a little more capacity in terms of beds and permanent housing and transitional housing, and then amount of people served?
Correct.
Because, I mean, I, idea I'm looking for doubling, since you get, you know, twice as much money, but I know that's not really possible.
Yeah.
Because the other thing I know you're struggling with is caseworkers, you know, the actual people who do the work, there's a limited resource there, too, and how many people they can manage.
That's correct, yeah. So I would not, we will not be serving double the number of households, but, but I can, I can get that number for you.
No, because, I mean, as the mayors are interested in is the amount of beds. As Council Pratt was just saying, I'd love to see more beds, obviously, in either permanent housing or supportive housing, or transitional housing. And so those folks might not be a case manager, they just need a place to sleep for the, you know, for a few days till they get back on their feet, or a few weeks. But yeah, I look forward to seeing, you know, how many more people you can serve additional, with the additional dollars. My last question is, rumor has it, what we've been hearing, mayor-wise, is that has Metro pretty much dispensed all the supportive housing money for this bond period? You've got the, you've got the capital part, which is the housing, but as far as the supportive housing funds, some mayors have heard that Metro's, Metro's pretty much tapped out the money they've given out to three counties, that's it, for the next few, for remaining, what, how many X years of the bond measure, or is that incorrect?
I believe that is incorrect.
So you still have money coming in from Metro for the next few years?
They'll continue to collect the taxes, and the, the projections are starting to become more stable and level out, so they're continuing to project with those collections.
Part of it is they front-loaded some of the money, too. And that's what people said.
Well, there were two things. There was the bond measure.
The bond for the housing.
For the housing, and that may be distributed. I don't know the status of that. But the supportive housing services levy, that's an annual levy that collects and distributes. So that, I don't know when that gets renewed, or when that will be on the ballot for renewal, but.
10 years, yeah. Okay, so.
Because I think some of the confusion, maybe you want to go over, is people, I've had people come up to me and go, I don't, why am I paying this Metro tax? What's it doing? What's the difference between the, the housing one that's building physical buildings and the, the services that you, that you're distributing? Money gets distributed, eh, can't talk. Money distributed to the counties to do those wraparound services with, in conjunction with the housing.
Right, that's exactly right. And the, the housing bond passed first, and that money has been all distributed in Washington County. I think there's, there may be still some projects to fund in Milton-Monclachemis. Washington County was really, we were with.
First.
Yeah, with the support of, of all of the jurisdictions, we were the first ones out the gate, and so that's done. Those units are being built now, and they'll be coming online. And then the housing, the supportive housing services is second, it's 10 years. It passed in 2020, collected in 2021, collecting annually. And, yeah, that's funding the supportive services. It can also go to capital, and it is essentially a recognition that we can't build our way out of the homelessness crisis. And so we, we need both, both supply side and ways to access the existing supply. Did that answer the?
To answer my question, yeah?
Yes.
Any other questions, Catherine? All right, well, thank you for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Have a safe drive home. And happy holidays. See Don itching to get up here back there. Welcome back, Don.
Thank you.
So our next item on the agenda is our water services reconnection fee discussion, led by Don Hudson. You're looking good, good to see you again.
Thank you. I can mostly see all of you, so you're fairly clear. Where'd you go again? No. So thank you, I'm Don Hudson, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'm here tonight to talk about the reconnection fee that is charged on a delinquent customer for non-payment. So first, I want to give you a little background, and then we'll talk about what we propose, and I'd like to get some feedback from Council this evening. So as part of our collection process, there are actually two fees that are currently billed and added on. Obviously, we haven't been doing shut-offs, so they're not being added right now, but in our normal process. The first is a delivery notification fee, which is also commonly known as a door hanger fee, and that's meant to cover the additional administrative expense of that process. The second is a service restoration fee that must be paid before we'll turn on water that's, a customer's been turned off for non-payment. The, these, both these fees are set annually as part of your rate resolution that I bring to the Council every June. These fees have not been changed since about 2010, 2009, 2010. It's $10 for the door hanger fee and $30 for the reconnection fee. So historically, this restoration fee has been charged for, to cover our costs of going out to the customer's house to shut the water off, and then when they've paid their bill, going back out and turning it back on. It's kind of also historically, in a lot of ways, been used as a deterrent for people to not get their water shut off. If you didn't get your water shut off, now we're going to charge you extra. So as part of our collection process, every month, it was actually, there's actually four contact points for delinquent amounts. So you get your bill around the first of the month, it's due 20 days later. And on your first, so our first contact point is the next month, when you get your bill, if you haven't paid, there's a previous balance showing on there. So that's the first opportunity that the customer knows that they have an outstanding balance. The second is then we send out a delinquent notice in the mail, or by email, on the 10th, around the 10th of the month. So that's contact point number two. About 10 days later, and around the 20th of every month, we put a, put together a door hanger, our water crews go out and hang on the, on the customer's door that they have a delinquent balance, and if it's not paid, then they're subject to shut-off. In that, in the meantime, as we get real close to that shut-off date, my staff makes email, phone contacts, to try to let people know, hey, we haven't received your payment, you're on the shut-off list. That process has been very successful for us, and it gets our shut-off list down to in single digits a month. So it's really, for the number of accounts we have, to only have the single digits of shut-offs is pretty remarkable. And it's, again, it's the, it's a touch points of my staff that has made that successful the last few years. So now, in the last couple of years or so, many entities across the state, and actually across the country, have started reviewing their shut-off fees, including in our area, Portland and Hillsborough, as part of their equity efforts. The reasons for eliminating fees is that adding a fee on top of outstanding balances disproportionately affects underserved populations, and those populations are already struggling to pay their bills. Since we have not done shut-offs in about four years, we are talking about starting up after the first of the year, around February, we don't have the data of the last four years to confirm that that's happening in Tuolatin. Anecdotally, that's what was happening, is the people that are, have a harder time paying their bills are the ones who have the outstanding balances, and now we're adding, adding an additional fee on top. What does resonate with our staff, though, is that adding an additional $30 to a customer's already outstanding bill that they're having difficulty to pay, is really struggling to keep people caught up. So they're already behind the eight ball, and they're adding all these fees on top, and it's really hard for people to stay current and stay caught up. Our average, average residential utility bill in Tuolatin is $120 a month. So if we're adding a $30 payment fee on that, it's about a 25% penalty on top of shutting someone's water off. So therefore, what we're proposing and asking the Council for direction on, and discussion of feedback about, is eliminating that $30 reconnection fee. We are not proposing to eliminate the $10 door hanger fee. We find that, and we hear this from a number of customers, that that's their reminder that they haven't paid their bill. And so there's a number of people who can pay their bill, but they just don't until they get that door hanger. So the, the limiting that fee kind of affects many other people that, it's kind of disproportionate there, if we got rid of that one as well. So if Council does give direction to, to get rid of, eliminate this fee, we'll be back in January with code change, there'd be some slight language in our code that would need to be done. Also, a rate resolution update, because it's, is set, the actual amount is set by resolution. The timing of what we're looking at is coming in early January. That way, it would be in place before we start shut-offs again, and we're proposing to do that at the end of February. So all this would be in place before we would get to that process. In addition, if we are going to be bringing a rate or a code change to you, we are looking at code language. There are just technical terms and things in there that probably need to be updated, because it hasn't been updated in so long that current practices, current processes, or just current technology in the field has changed a little bit, so we would bring that back in that as well. At that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, hear the discussion, and see if you have any direction for me this evening.
Thanks, Don. Questions for Don? Council Sacco.
It's not really a question, just answering your question, my opinion. I think that folks getting their water shut off is probably deterrent enough, and if they could afford to pay their bill at that time, that they would. I would think that the $30 is just more of a burden to get those resources back to them, and so I, I agree with your proposal and support eliminating that fee.
Other comments, questions?
In total, what do you think the lost revenue to the city would be? Though, we're not trying to collect revenue, I acknowledge that, but I just, what's the total dollar amount roughly?
It's probably less than $3,600, or about $3,600 a year, because we've got that list down, so.
Sure. You know, I remember, this is now moving to the, I remember living with my parents and having bills constantly shut off, and I just remember that so many times trying to collect that fee, trying to raise enough money just to get that fee. Hard enough, like you said, we're already behind the eight ball, and then to have that disconnected, that's just bringing back so many bad memories about those times. And it is hard. The $10, I think I agree with you, because sometimes that's a reminder. But yeah, I would be in agreement of that as well. Thank you.
I'm in agreement of that as well. I'm curious, though, however, around trends nationally, if there is any conversations around shutting off water in general. I remember that conversation was going on a while ago in the past where I lived, just because of basic human rights and basic needs. And so just curious if you have any information about any of those national trends or direction that we think that we're going in this?
I have heard that there are some entities that will look at that, or have, you know, sliding scales and different types of things, but I'm not really up on which ones have made those changes, or, or up on the dialogue. I have heard that that is happening, but I don't know to what extent.
Thank you. We do know.
I think we're one of the last cities to do this, aren't we? That's what you were going to say.
In Washington County.
Well, we're currently shutting, not shutting off under the pandemic, yes, we're one of the last.
We're the last one.
But I think the question is related to just a general.
Yeah, it was a different question.
Okay, yeah, but yes, we are one of the last that are not shutting off yet.
Council Reyes.
I'm also in agreement of terminating the, that fee. I think I, I echo what Council Gosales was saying about staying behind, and then the top of that, an extra fee, it's almost sad, I would say, but, yeah, I, I do agree also with keeping that $10 fee. I think that's fair to, to remind and, you know, staff time and things like that, so I, I can see that. But re, asking people to pay, to restore their services, it's, it's tough, so thank you.
Council President Pratt.
Well, Council Brooks said kind of, I'm fully in agreement with this, but with the people who do have their water shut off, how many of them, is it permanent? Do we have any data on that?
Usually by the end of the day, we have all accounts turned back on.
Okay.
So again, it's that, it's a communication, and communication with our water crews that go out there and do that. So we've had good success of having those turned on by the end of the day. If it's not, it's one or two, and sometimes it's a vacant property.
Yeah, and it totally makes sense to me, like, why are we adding a burden onto the people that can least afford it?
Sounds like we're all in agreement. I, one thing I, I wanted to mention is just, you know, looking back, you know, we've gotten rid of late book fees at the library, and the governor just waived a whole bunch of fines and penalties against folks so they can get their driver's licenses back, so I think this is a, you know, this is an easy one for us to decide to, you know, get rid of this fee, and help people get back on their feet, and, you know, pay their water bill, and not additionally penalize them.
We'll be back in Freddie next month with the, with the code changes.
Appreciate it, Don.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the Council meeting agenda review. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda, or any issues with an item on the consent agenda?
I do have one item. I reviewed the, the minutes, and reading my, rereading my comments on the Climate Action Plan, I, I think that my, my, what was written was not representative of what I said, and so I, this is my first time trying to figure out, how do we revise that minute to reflect my, my dissension on the Climate Action Plan and the way it was presented? And, but I am for alternative options and discussions, but not the way it was outlined.
I can work with you on that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So basically, when we make the motion for, it'll be with some amendments to the, how would you word, how would you want it worked? How would you word it, Kevin?
Keep your ears there, guys. Sorry, Your Honor, I, I, I think that's appropriate. The counselor can work with the city recorder to determine what, what was actually stated at the council meeting, and we'll bring the revised minutes back to the Council at a future meeting in January.
So would you, we do item number one, or we table it for a future meeting?
And, Your Honor, I'm reviewing the agenda right now.
I know in other meetings I've been, we've approved two sets of meetings, because we didn't have quorum, or something like that.
You can just remove the work session.
You could, that, that's perfectly appropriate, just to review those specific minutes.
When it comes up, Council Gosales just asked for it to be removed.
Sure. And just for my own clarity, I know that the minutes doesn't reflect every word verbatim. If, if that's the case, I'm, I'm in agreement, I, I understand that. I'm not looking for everybody, it's just the intimation seemed that I was very for it, and I, and I made very specific comments of the Climate Action Plan and how I, I see it going forward. And so I just wanted to highlight a little bit of my, my dissension, and, and open to rewording, reworking the Climate And so I just wanted to highlight a little bit of my, my dissension and open to rewording, reworking the climate action plan. So that's, that's.
So I'll bring it, I'll bring it back up at the end of the, when we get to that section of the agenda. And we'll have a vote or something where we say, you know, that they'll come back in a future session after revision.
Just, just an FYI, what I do if I see something is I usually reach out to Nicole before the meeting. And then we can get anything that was mistake taken care of before we come on to council. So I don't know if that's helpful to you, but that, that's been helpful to me.
It will. Thank you.
I have Counsel Brooks is up for a pledge of allegiance tonight. We have no proclamations, I believe, just general business, just. But it's a short agenda, which is kind of nice with the holidays coming. With that, I'll go ahead and start the council roundtable and we'll start at Counsel Hillier. I'm sorry, Counsel Sacco. That'd be really weird. I guess I could do it that way, but.
I just have one thing to mention. We had our first idea committee meeting last week. These weeks are flying by. And it was a great first meeting. The committee members are all very warm, welcoming to one another and just a great group of people. I'm really excited to get this work going and be able to report back to all of you on our updates. Thank you.
Now Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. I haven't had any meetings. Our architecture review board meeting will be later this week. So that's all I have.
Counsel Reyes.
Yeah, no official council meetings, but I just want to invite everyone out there. The Posada that's coming up on December 13th at the library, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it's a time to, it's a free event for families. So just a time to come and enjoy some Hispanic, I would say, cultural style of celebrating the beginning of Christmas. So, thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez.
So I attended the WCCC with Mayor. That was very, very nice to, to see that process go down and the projects that are at the table. That was exciting to see. I also attended a chamber networking meeting and also a chamber meeting. And we had a really good attendance. About 44 business people who showed up there at the garages. Of course, they were talking about the pickleball, which was an exciting thing. In talking to them a little bit more about if they're receiving city communication, how's that going? As we're looking for feedback for all these things that we're getting ready to implement. So I got a little bit of feedback around that. I think I'll prepare a little email on what we've, some of the conversations. I also attended the Business CIO. Is that, I think that's how the acronym is for all of them. That was very nice to see as well. And the frankness of those questions was just kind of nice. And attending the choir performance in the library was amazing to see. So that, that was just so much, so much joy. Had a good attendance there. So thank you for the library because they do such phenomenal work on activities. That's all I got.
Counsel Brooks.
A lot of my meetings this month have been postponed, but I did attend the, the, or canceled. But I did attend the League of Oregon Cities' conversation around the law enforcement perspective around addictions. And there was a presentation about 11 points to consider. So there's a lot of points that make a lot of sense. The person who's presenting asked us to just take it all, like to present it all as a group. But they didn't really have a budget yet or how they're going to do it. So I didn't have my rubber stamp out yet, but I, I, there's a lot of possibilities. A couple of things that were the bigger lifts that I think are important to understand are the 72-hour detox centers and how we would fund them and where that would come from. But I do like the addition of the time because it takes longer to detox from fentanyl. And there was one more, but I can't remember what it was. It was a big chunk as well that seems still vague to me. But there's a lot of updating and information about increased penalties for people that are distributing and dealing. And I encourage everybody to take a look. And I'm sure the mayor will have more on that. And happy holidays. Thank you. And thanks for the work on the idea committee. I, I also just want to say one other thing is I know that a lot of people right now are feeling kind of tender, especially around all the holidays and some of the antisemitism and different things that people have been facing. And I think that sometimes people don't even recognize what the nuances of some of these things are about. So I encourage people to talk to people and, and come together in our community as people are going through a hard time or a good time during the holidays. Thanks.
Counsel President Pratt.
I attended the Clackamas County Toline Strategy Subcommittee. And the big concern was there are three meetings, the one that, you know, there's the one in Wilsonville. There was one towards Portland. The one that is supposed to be in Clackamas County, I'm not sure it's still scheduled. It was not as of, January 6th. It finally got scheduled. Okay. So there was a lot of, and then luckily, the mayor had forwarded his invitation because everybody was speculating. Nobody had seen that. So I just literally read it. But it, the usual frustration, I guess. I attended the R1 Act meeting and they did an overview of the proposed I-5 bridge. That was interesting because they talked about auxiliary lanes and Metro, the Metro representative was not very happy about that. And Mayor Hodson and Murray Rogers and I spoke up to the fact that they're going to spend $6 billion with no proposed additional lanes. We thought that was maybe looking out 40 years is a good idea when we're planning these big projects. But anyway, and then Seafar was just to get together. And then, oh, the Twalton Community Police Foundation, our shop with the compliments coming up. And that's it.
Back on the 29th of November, it was fun to go to the Borland Free Clinics wall breaking event. They're going to be changing their space to have actual private rooms and the like for, make it look like a real medical office. So construction has already started. So deciding to attend that was very well attended. The next day, Sheriff Garrett's retirement on November 30th was standing room only. Chief Pickering was there, too. A lot of great stories about the sheriff. Looks like he's going to have a lot of together time with his wife, which is what he wants and what she wants going into the future. Now Sheriff Massey is running the sheriff program. So I'm hoping to have her come out and visit with us, you know, in the first half of the year. As Counselor Brooks said, I attended along with Cheryl in the Comprehensive Addiction Crisis webinar from LOC where they had different ideas they want to present to the legislature, 11-point plan. They've worked with the cities on this, different county councils, and also with the sheriffs and police organizations on dealing with the ramifications of fentanyl, Measure 110, and how to fix some of the shortcomings we're now seeing throughout the state with particularly with charging folks when it comes to crimes and assisting folks and giving them the treatment that they need. So looking forward to that. I'm surprised Counsel President Pratt hasn't mentioned the Holly Lights parades.
Oh, yes.
Yep, yep. Yeah. And Chief is there, of course. The, the Holly Lights, Chief was at the Holly Lights, too. As were a lot of police officers. That was terrific. Julie and Heidi did an outstanding job, again, coordinating the parades. The Saturday turnout in the Ibach Park area was phenomenal. I was also surprised on Sunday, the turnout in eastern Twalton, despite the drizzly rain, there's quite the crowds. So another successful year. I think Heidi and Julie told me they maxed out on the amount of vehicles for the parade. So a lot of fun. You know, they're giving out bling to people. You can't see it well, but these things light up in green. So we all had that. What's that?
Betsy was out there on Sunday.
Yep, yep. And then we had the mayor's awards where the, Elizabeth from Cross Street helped me judge on the last two nights on, you know, the winners. That was, that was a lot of fun, as I mentioned. On the fourth, as Counsel Gonzalez, Gonzalez mentioned, we had the Washington County Coordinating Committee retreat. There was two phases to that. One was to give an overview of the history of the Washington County Coordinating Committee and M-stip for folks who are new to the programs. The second half of the program was evaluating the projects in the four districts. The emphasis was basically pick the top three for each district. Beyond that, it probably won't get funded. They're working with about $40 million per district on the next M-stip phase. That probably is not going to happen. Obviously, it's probably going to be lower because of the county's budget issues. But at least we, we've honed in on those three projects that each district would like to move forward. On the sixth was the CCIO meeting, as Counsel Gonzalez mentioned. It went very, very well. They had a lot of questions. I think Cheryl and myself and Chief did, you know, did a good job answering the questions, especially the chief. I think chief had some of the tougher questions when it came to, you know, crime, especially with business owners, you know, perplexed by shoplifting and lack of jail space. But Chief, you did a great job in answering those questions. Mayor's lunch was on the 8th of December, Community Warehouse. Anna from Community Warehouse was there presenting their mission. A lot of mayors had no idea about Community Warehouse, what they did. The bad news was with this latest amount of rain, they flooded again. So they flooded, what, about a year or two ago, got it fixed, and now flooded again. Because what's happening is with all that rain, the water came through the floor because they're on the flood plain. So their showroom is closed again. Luckily, the stuff they give out is on the upper floor. But the, the shop was, got wet again. But the online shopping experience is still available. You can still buy items on the web from their website. So do that over the holidays to support them. Today was the Washington County Coordinating Committee monthly meeting. We reviewed the M-stip projects for our district. The three, the three projects are 80 Road, Greenberg Road, and for us would be Scipoll Road. Were the three that would move forward. It's at $50 million, so it's above what the county is looking for. So we've got to figure out what will happen with that, if each city will be asked to scale back a certain amount of dollars to get to $40 million. Metro was there presenting the UGB project update on how they're evaluating what, if the UGB should expand, what parcels are available in it and what, how Metro will go forward in 2025. I was surprised to learn that this study is going on for a whole nother year. They're not going to deliver it to Metro Council to the end of the year. So they're going to give us, keep giving us updates on their evaluation. They're getting pretty granular, which we're all appreciating, figuring out what's marketable land, what's not, what could be acted on, what is just forget it because there's no infrastructure or there's no money for it. So they are working with the cities and working with city staff. They're very complimentary of city staff support of the, of the project and getting the input that they needed. And then finally, later this afternoon, with the Aging Task Force. The Aging Task Force is, their project right now is the You Are Not Alone program. And that's where folks who are isolated or just not, no families around that, someone gives them a call once or twice a day, checks in with them, see how's they're doing. So they're trying to spin up this program to have a dedicated phone number, a list of volunteers, protocol, all that. They're hoping to have this done in about six months to be able to start, you know, checking on those folks. It's, you know, elderly, disabled, or just, you know, shut ins to make sure they're okay. You know, one of the two things they're looking for is they need a permanent, well, space to call from. They were talking about landlines. I'm like, you realize you can get a cell phone number with a family plan? And they'll cover it. And they're like, oh, yeah, we could do that. But the spacing is the big thing. Because they need to do, you know, from a room where they can't be overheard. If they have to keep sensitive information, they got to be able to lock it up. But they're in the phase right now of checking out Goodyear, Arizona, is got one of the biggest ones out there, as does San Diego. So they're talking those two jurisdictions to find out best practices. They have decided they're just going to do the phone only. They're not going to ask beyond that. And that the only time they would contact the police is if they were unable to reach that person and they're emerging contact. They're very complimentary of Chief Pickering and his assistants in it. So I thank you for that. And that's all I've got for tonight. We've got a whopping two extra minutes to get ready for our meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the work session tonight. And we've got a couple of minutes off. We'll reconvene our regular meeting at 7 o'clock.